All right, so we'll call the meeting to order. First on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Any amendments to the agenda? Are we good to make a motion to approve as written?
Move to approve, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Yeah, now you have to vote.
Could be a tough one tonight. We're -- tonight, we're putting the public comment towards the end, being that it's mostly an informational meeting, so we decided to put the public comment at the end of the informational meeting, so I'll make sure everybody has an opportunity to...
That's when they ask questions on the public.
Yeah, I mean, you know how it is. I mean, we're usually, you know, as long as you guys don't get, you know, out of control there, and we usually are able to take some questions from the public, so, you know...
And as long as we're rowdy here by 8:00.
As long as you don't get too rowdy tonight, Ellie, we'll be... We'll take some questions every once in a while, but if there's any other questions at the end, we can take those. So, um, so let's, um, we'll turn over to the, uh, we'll do the town warning, and then we'll go through the high levels of the, um, the budget, and, uh, and if anybody has anything that they'd like to dive in a little bit farther into the budget, we can do that. So...
It's right here, if you want it.
Yeah, I have my own copy somewhere. All right, so the warning, as we talked before, so just quickly breeze into the warning, the, uh, the usuals, electing the town moderator, clerk, and treasurer, the first three, and then we have the, the two select board, um, positions that are open, Paul's and myself's. We have the two lister positions that are open.
So, one of those is vacant, so one of them, we, um, Pam Brown currently serves in now, but the other one...
Number six.
Yeah, but number six, that is vacant now.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if Pam is gonna run or not. I don't get that impression, but, I don't know.
Okay. So, that one's vacant currently.
Well, Pam is in it now, but I don't think she's running again, I guess.
Yeah.
Just like Paul's not running again for select board.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Talk to them a little bit about it.
Yeah, I knew what you had.
I'll have to come in and talk to them some more.
Good for you.
And then we have the, the two in there for the trustee of public funds piece, which again, Paul's position there of the one-year balance of the three-year term is, that one's vacant.
Mm-hmm.
And I haven't heard of anybody running on that one yet either.
I haven't, yeah.
Yeah, I've heard of one person that is interested in it.
Okay, one. And then we have a couple of, um, oh, that's why I wrote it in the wrong spot. And then we have the budget piece, so 10 is the budget, um, which I'll speak on the budget behalf as normal. Will somebody else wants to do it?
I think it's you.
Could be your last hurrah, Paul.
You're just gonna read the, you're gonna read the budget summary.
No, when it, when it does come time for my nomination, I do wanna take a couple of minutes and just say some thank yous.
Okay. And that's under, um, four. Yep. And then we have 11, uh, 11, 12...
Lisa, are you gonna speak to number 11? So, you're prepared that you or, um...
I'd tell me.
Benton, yeah, you or Benton who's gonna talk?
Yeah, Ben, yep.
Benton, I mean Bennett, sorry.
Yes.
So, because Rick Benson was asked.
Do you, do you wanna speak before we open it up for discussion like at the introduction of the article, or do you wanna wait till discussion time?
I don't know, what typically do people do?
Well, usually what happens is the maker of the motion gets first dibs on speaking.
Okay.
So, you could either jump right up and move the question, and then you would have the first shot, and then I'd recognize you to, to talk about it.
Okay.
We could do that.
Okay.
And if not, if someone beats it to it, I can ask them if they mind.
Okay.
Then most people will be fine with that.
Thank you.
Okay.
I mean, I guess looking at the item, Lisa, I, I would recommend that, that somebody talks on that article prior to making a motion. The only reason why I say that is I think, I think the discussion is bigger than just this year's item for a motion, because we talked about, you know, what does it really take to fund our, our library, right? And, and so that even though we had increased our funds, um, in our general fund budget, this extra 27.5, which comes up to be a total of, um, $35,000, I think? So, $35,000 is really the number that the town needs to support to minimally fund the library. Um, and I think that's kind of an important thing, because it sounds like, you know, I, I think that people just need to understand, like, if we want a public lib, or if we want a library, then this is what the minimum funding's gonna be going forward, and it has that good discussion, um, part of it, because someone might just think, well, this is a one-time thing, oh, that's ridiculous, we can't give you that much money, or maybe, oh, that's good, it's one time, not knowing that this is likely, we're gonna take that information and likely apply it to future budgets. So, um, and I, and I think, I think a majority of people in, in the town don't understand, well, one, that it's not a town-owned library, and two, you know, how much it, it does take to fund the library, and maybe a little bit of recent history on what you've had to do to fund the library, which isn't sustainable, you know? And then, like, it wasn't Bennett, but there was another gentleman that was talking about minimum, like, a library of that size should be $125,000, $150,000 budget, and you guys are working on a $75,000 budget, you know?
So, we're gathering that information from, I think, Chelsea, Tunbridge, and Rochester were, who folks asked about, so we're gathering that information, and what Bethel is paying for operating costs is minimal compared to what they pay. So, and really, the idea is to build up the, to be able to get some time and some breathing room to rebuild the investment account. And there's some misconception around town that at one point, we had millions of dollars in the bank, which isn't accurate at all. So, um, if that comes up, I certainly would wanna be able to address that.
Yeah. Do you have some kind of a handout that you're, you're gonna have?
Yeah, so I think that's the idea, is we were gonna put, like, a handout on people's seats.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
So...
So, you just talk to the handout?
Right, I mean, they'll have what's in here anyway.
Yes.
But I think just, you know, addressing those pieces would be important, because people, I would've thought, would be fairly well-educated about it, actually have really lots of misconceptions, so...
I think that one of the biggest misconceptions that kind of has come up to me is the fact that people think that you're town-owned and town-run and part of the budget already.
Right.
And it's like, no, they have their own endowment, their own fundraisers, they own their own building, and so...
It's actually an investment account, it's not really an endowment.
Oh, okay.
Gene brought up last time to be sort of careful about that, um, language, but, yeah, and there's, there's a whole way that it went, but we weren't ever really given, like, this huge lump sum of money, we just got a little teeny bit based on interest on a trust.
Sure, makes sense, back when interest was...
And we're not the only ones receiving interest from that trust.
Right, oh, there you go. So, yeah, I think that'll be great, so I think the first part is that people realize that you're not town-owned. That was, even Bennett said, "I didn't realize until I, you know, joined the library," that, so I do think that's a big thing. So, yeah, copies on the chairs, whatever, and if you need copies, you know, we can make them for you, just swing by the office and...
And we're gonna have a table out in the lobby as well.
Oh, good, you talked to Pam or Kelly, something?
Yeah, I did, yep.
Great. Oh, that'd be great.
Yep, hi, yep.
All right, so I wrote down, so Bennett, Lisa, this'll be the library, and who's gonna speak to, and I'm gonna be, dial it, we chat today, Valter Gaddy, make sure he knows.
And then, and then 12 is, is the recreation improvements with the skate park, so Ellie, are you...
We, we are already, um, working on, we do want to present right away. We have in the past, when it's come up in 2016, we did a presentation in 2016, and we wanna do a presentation at town meeting this year, so we will want to present right away.
So, will you be doing that, should I recommend you do that?
Yeah, yes, I'll be doing that, and we'll be having, um, a table, and as part of Bethel for All, we'll be having a display on the bulletin board outside, because Bethel for All, getting together and doing stuff.
Then we have the human services piece of debt.
Paul, you willing to touch base on that again this year?
Yep.
Do we know of any identities that are planning to be there to speak, or...
The only one I've gotten any communication from was Safeline, they sent a note thanking us for the, for proposing their appropriation, but I have not heard, and, uh, anybody coming from the agencies.
All right. And then 14 is, what, your Valley ambulance?
Yeah, I'm gonna reach out to Dave Aldrich Gaddy, since he's the representative, and make sure he's prepared to speak.
Okay. And, you know, that one, two, um, you may wanna just be prepared to speak on the...
Increase.
The increases, 'cause, you know, on the budget-wise, the, what your Valley ambulance was probably our largest budget increase percentage-wise, so...
Yeah.
So, there's probably gonna be some questions centered around that. And then, and then we have the petition piece that was for the Playhouse Theater in Randolph, and I would assume that...
I'm gonna email Bennett Law and find out if he's gonna...
See if Bennett wants to talk about it?
Yeah, 'cause he's the one who handed in the petition.
Okay. And then we got the taxes, um...
Boy, blew over that one quite quick.
Yeah. Teresa's taxes, when she wants them in by.
That's right.
So, those dates are on there, um, and then, um, then we have the question in regards to the Australian ballot.
So, Rick, do you need someone to speak to that, or are you just gonna say, "We have to vote on it"? Are you, are you gonna explain that we have to vote from the floor, and it's for it to be the next year, or do you want someone else to do that, or...
Um, it's up to you guys if, if somebody wants to, um, it's just a kind of a technicality.
Dave says you have nothing to do with it.
I mean, I would assume after it's motioned and seconded, it's gonna be quite the discussion.
Yeah, floor's open then, so...
Yeah.
And I think that we've answered several questions about, um, the requirements to pass a paper ballot, to go to, is that, am I using the right terms here? To move, yeah, so that I...
Because that's, that statute, nor, nor, that it needs to be, we need to vote.
Yeah, so it's seven people, is what you said?
Oh, oh, you're talking about that part.
Yeah.
I'll go over that before in my...
Okay, all right.
In my introduction.
Yeah, I'm not sure if this is the article or not, but that's my assumption, so, all right.
I mean, the only thing I can foresee is, even though it appears clear to me in here, when people hear Australian ballot, they may think, the whole, you know, the whole town meeting day, so, so maybe on your end, if you can just explain to them that, that this would just be for the town officers only, that, you know, the budget and all those pieces would continue to be done in person, but this is just for, you know, boards, the board directors...
Yeah, just, yeah, moderator, town clerk, yeah, lister.
Yeah, lister, pieces of it. The only thing I was... The only thing that was kinda odd that I was thinking about is, so if you're electing your moderator through that, do you have to have the meeting after the, like, you'd have to have the Australian ballot the day before, and then you have your meeting the day after, or...
No, so that would be electing them for the following year.
Yeah.
Because you're, you're elected until a new moderator...
Until the next select, okay.
Until the next select.
Okay.
Yeah, I, you know, thinking, it didn't occur to me that this was gonna be all town officers, I was thinking strictly select board, so, yeah, okay, so everyone who has...
It has to be, that's the only way I think it can go, is you're either, Australian ballot can only be three things, your public questions, budget, or elected officials, so it has to be all elected officials.
All elected officials, and all, no matter, because we don't, yeah, we do.
Yeah.
Well, that's usually what anybody wants to vote for. Well, I think it takes a lot of...
See papers.
Which is good.
And all that stuff, ahead of time.
That is done in that way, yeah.
Well, they haven't.
Well, because...
I see the benefit for that.
Don't get confused, they have an appointed town clerk or town treasurer, so some towns, if they appoint their clerk treasurer, then of course, they're not running, so sometimes that goofs you up, but yeah, that's royalty points, but here, you're elected, and yeah, you run every, um, every year. Or for certain things, it's every year.
So, yeah, so there will be a couple of things to navigate through on that, one, one that it's just separating out the officers, and then what the definition of those officers would be, which would be, you know...
The ones just numbers one through nine.
Right, so one through nine, and this year's warning.
Well, that's gonna shorten up town meeting, that.
Yeah, no kidding.
Well, and, yeah.
You're right, it does, if it passes.
But it's gonna make more work for the BCA and, and printing up, you know, we're gonna have to have a ballot with all the different candidates on it, so it's, you'll save time there, but you'll spend more time there.
True.
But wait and see how it turns out.
Mm-hmm.
My guess is that'll be a lengthy discussion.
Now, will that be a paper ballot, or from the floor?
It'll be from the floor. Mike, I had had to ask Rick, how many, someone asked me, how a paper ballot, how do you ask for a paper ballot, and I had to ask Rick, 'cause I didn't know what the magic number was, and he said seven.
Seven or eight or something, yeah.
One person has to ask, and seven people have to agree.
Affirm it, yeah.
Yep, that's what Rick said.
Which I imagine that's probably the way it's gonna go, I would, I would assume.
I would think that would be the proper way to do it, too.
And I know we took up the question of Australian ballot, like, I don't know, 10 years ago, but it was on the, it was on the, any other business to conduct, it wasn't a formal, remember we took that, like, um, under any other business, it was, man, 10, 12 years ago?
Just an absentee vote?
Yeah, remember we had that, and...
Right.
Just a hand vote of people that wanted that years ago, but that was like an all-or-nothing type deal.
It was just like a non-binding...
Somebody had brought that to the floor, and...
Oh, I didn't know that.
But we've never formally voted on it. And then we have the, um, shall the town provide notice of availability of the annual reports by postcard, um, mailed to all the registered voters at least 30 days prior to the annual meeting, instead of mailing the, the report, so that, so, in order to do that, we have to do it at town meeting day, so that would be, instead of handing out 700 books of town meeting day books, we would send a postcard in the mail to everybody, and then they could pick it up at a, you know, at the, at the office, or at the library, or the post office, or...
Yeah, whoever we get to agree to.
To collect that, and I think the idea behind it is that we usually print off 700 of them, and maybe 300 or 400 of them actually get used, and we have a, a whole bunch of leftover, um, books that don't get used, and just become a waste of money and paper.
Will we go to mail vote to those who asked?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but the only way we can do that is by a question on the floor, so we can't change the, the delivery mechanism unless it's voted on the floor, so that would be the, um, on, on the town's end, it'll, you know, save some time, some money, and some paper.
Postage, printing, that sort of thing, but, yeah, so we'll see. Someone, actually, it wasn't our idea, that was, somebody else came to us and said, "Hey, do you ever consider doing this?"
Right. And then, and then we just have the overall discussion items of, of what is being done on Australian ballot, um, so, which is the cannabis retailer, um, piece, as well as the bond vote for the water.
So, I have a question, Rick, about that. I have a question about the, um, number one, the cannabis, so it's discussion only, so, I mean, obviously, people can ask questions, um, so it's such a difficult, in a way...
Can you do that while you've got people voting on that?
Yeah.
Topic at the same time, in the same building?
In that regard, is if we go to elected, elected officials, we can't discuss that part of it in the future.
Right, but if, if folks are coming in and voting from 7:00 to 7:00 on these questions...
Eight to 7:00.
Eight to 7:00.
Pam, I'll hurt you, yeah.
Well, she told me to be there at 7:00.
Yeah, she wants you there, really, to set up, but, yeah.
If people are in the building voting on that, is it proper to have a discussion of it?
And can they hear the discussion from where they'll be voting?
No, they'll be out in the lobby.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
You can't hear it from the lobby.
I didn't think so from where you vote, so, I just, I'm concerned a little bit about, it's such a confusing topic, cannabis, to be able to speak about it articulately, and, um...
Especially what's happened in the news last week. You know, that deadly stuff that they finding in it? People are getting very sick?
Well, I just saw a while ago, the first three months, $1.6 million in tax revenue for the state.
Wow.
1.6 in three months.
So, it's gonna be talked about, I guess, it's can't zone it.
But they're not gonna tell you how much...
The question is, are we gonna allow retailers?
Right, right, yeah, we have to just be kinda...
Within the existing zoning district for retail, we can't zone it out, but it's only can go in districts where it's currently, like, if retails are currently allowed, then that would be the...
And I guess we, yeah, we need to make sure people are aware of where that is.
And it becomes such a, it's a very uneducated topic for people, because, you know, the state has the governance over the grow operations, the town has no say in any of that, and then, then the state turned around and pushed it down to the town's level to say if you, if you wanna allow retail establishment or not, so, I don't know why they don't, um, but on our end, the reason why the question has come is, one, it's been a couple of years, and we haven't asked the question, even though the state said they recommended to put it on all the ballots, and two, we do have an identity that wants to put one in, in, in the commercial district, so, um, so at this point, if we didn't pose the question, they could easily, you know, go get 20 signatures and have it put on the ballot. So, I, I think the only thing that probably needs to be brought out is, if you do allow retail cannabis sales, you have the right to take it away at any time through, through vote.
Yeah, listen, whole thing, yeah.
So, you could go, you could go very next year, someone could petition and say, "We, we don't wanna do retail cannabis anymore."
So, they changed it.
And you could change it back, however, if there's any established footprint, so...
Business.
If you have a business in town that's already selling it, then you're grandfathered in there, until you decide that you're done with it.
Yeah.
So, it's a very tricky thing, if you voted in, it's in, or a retailer is in, period.
Yeah.
And you, and the town doesn't have any say over that at that point, I mean, townspeople could say, "We don't want any more of it," but whatever's in is in, it's, it's way different than tobacco and liquor and, you know...
There should be somebody other than me talking about that, because I'm not...
No?
It's not my, my position to be explaining all that.
We're getting pumped up, you know? So, I don't, I mean, I, I don't know, I, I mean, I think what we really need to do is just have a very short paragraph or two paragraph statement that follows the legislation law of, you know, what the question really entitles, that it's for retail inside the commercial district only, um, and then, and then I guess whoever talks about, if it's me or somebody else, can, you know, what that means to us, if, if you vote in favor or not in favor of what that does.
I can draft something and then send it to you guys, and then, to all of you select board members, and then you can, you know, make comments, or what do you think it needs or adds, or, so we'll talk about the zoning, talk about the grandfather, yeah, okay.
Something very simple paragraph that we can talk about, that...
Yeah, and someone, I'm sure, hopefully, is, someone is there, you know, maybe the people that wanna open a store, maybe they'll be there so they can answer questions, and so...
And I'm, I'm assuming that if it's voted down, that it could be petitioned to be put back on the question?
Again next year.
For next year?
Right, I mean...
Well, and I'm not sure, actually, I don't know if we would, I don't know if it has to wait for town meeting, or if we have to do...
Special meeting.
Yeah, I'll have to look, I can't remember.
Could be a tricky one, 'cause I think a lot of the comments, this is the only agenda item that I've had some comments on over the last month or so, and a lot of the comments don't follow exactly what the question reads, so...
That's, yeah.
I think there's a disconnect on thinking that the town has, or the townspeople have the authority over marijuana in the town, and it's not that, it's just the, just the retail sale of it, not to grow and not, you know, there's already rules in place about public usage and things like that, so...
I think it's wrong, I think what they put in the, in the, in their legislation's wrong, so you don't want me to talk about it.
Okay.
You don't wanna be the spokesperson, no?
All right.
It's one of those, you know, kind of the horse-type deals, so...
And maybe it'll change at some point.
Maybe, but until it does, I don't know.
It's interesting how the state's the only one that gets any money out of this, isn't it? I mean, we get the, whatever.
Permit fee.
Permit fee of...
Which we don't know what it is for retailer, for a grower, we got...
20 bucks.
We got $200 for the grower.
It's like, oh, God, yeah.
That's a one-time fee?
I kinda thought so, 'cause it was 200 bucks, so, I can't say for sure, but, yeah, okay, well, we'll work on it.
So, we gotta work on the cannabis one?
Yep, I don't know.
All right, between Teresa and I, we'll figure that one out.
Okay, we'll figure it out.
We'll draw straws if we have to.
Mm-hmm. Have a feeling I know what you're not gonna get.
Well, let's see, well, it's pretty easy, Gene's not here tonight, Lily's not here tonight, so...
One of them.
Yep, you're not here, get elected.
Yeah, can be voluntold.
Yeah.
You're voluntold. And then Article 2 is in regards to the, um, the bond for Phase 2 of the water project.
So, the only thing, if I remember correctly, please, if I'm wrong, the only thing the select board, or I, cannot say, we cannot say, "Vote yes." We can talk about it and answer questions, but the select board cannot say, "Go vote yes" on this, right? Isn't that the rule about that?
Well, that's what I'm saying, on either one of those, you can't really...
Oh, yeah, we're just saying to answer questions, not give your opinion, for the town, you know?
Well, I think, I think, like, in the cannabis one, I think it's okay for individuals to understand what the yes versus the no vote gives them, I mean, we can't endorse one of them.
No, exactly.
But you could say, you know, if you do vote yes, then someone can sell retail marijuana, and if you vote no, you know, then they can't, however, if you vote yes, and then you wanna take it back at another time, those, those retailers are already grandfathered clause in. I think it's that helpful to know that.
Yeah.
I think the water one, we just, I, I think it's, you know, to read the, read the article, and...
Yeah.
Hopefully.
I don't think you really need a discussion on that, do you?
Well, I like, I like the information in here about how the last one went, how it got financed, and who's paying for what.
Yeah.
And this is very clear at the end of this one about, okay, the users are still gonna pay for this new water project, but the town's gonna do the infrastructure.
Yeah, we're gonna do the roads, yeah.
So, it's, we're doing something, we're not technically paying for the water upgrade.
Right, we're only, yeah, the, the roads, the tax people are paying for just the road work, which they would've anyways, so, yeah, we, so we put this out on the website, it's on, there was a link to Front Porch Forum, Facebook, so that it's out, so, and Mike Maynor is coming next Monday for the, you know, the big bond information, he's gonna come from Aldridge and Elliott, so he hasn't been in front of the select board in a while, and so he's gonna talk about, too, and he's coming Wednesday at noon, and he and Richard and I are gonna sit down and go over all the plans.
This, this, I don't know who put this together.
Mike Maynor, Aldridge and Elliott.
It's short, to the point, in English.
Yes, it's very nice, yes, you did a good job, yep.
Oh, this is kinda funky, like, with that, and you go to the next one, it's upside down.
Oh, I'm gonna give you the wrong one. Oh, I'm gonna give you the wrong one.
That's the special one, just for you.
That's, I made a stamp, I did want to see how it'll come, it's gonna work.
Oh, it's gotta go this way.
I might get that one, or, pick a better one off the way out. But I also sent it to you guys as a PDF.
Yes, I saw it, yeah, it's very nice.
So, I mean, unless you have a different opinion on it, I think, if it's, the article's just read the way it is, as notice that there is the water line vote, and here's what the article is, and...
Yeah.
It's out front to be voted on, you know?
There's stuff in town, but I mean, we certainly can answer questions.
Right, because I'm sure there may be somebody who doesn't make the hearing, which always happens, that will have questions.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I don't know if it would be worthwhile mentioning the fact that we're doing something in three or four years that we should have been doing over the last 40 or 50 years, you know? And so, yes, it looks like a big hit, and we should have done it differently, but if we don't, we're gonna pay for it without any help.
Mm-hmm.
And this is the tail end of what we have to do to...
Add people. For now, unless they...
To keep our operating permit.
With the current operating permit we have right now, but once we do this...
It's restrictive, yeah.
Yeah, they'll release that portion, but just remember, they do that sort of review every...
Couple of years.
Couple of years, so it doesn't mean to say they won't add that restriction back on later, but, we are, you know, Dana Nagy does seem like, if we pass the bond vote, that he'll be maybe willing to take it off, you know, sooner, so... I was thinking about cannabis, Rick, we could, if people want to see the zoning maps, you could send them to the planning commission table and tell them on the way that people are there looking for members. You could do a sales pitch from the...
Like the recruiter.
Yeah, well, we're gonna be, we're trying, so...
So, is there any further questions in regards to the, the warning for town meeting Can't change it, we can, you know, we can take your questions, at this point, it's, it is what it is, it's been printed, so, so it looks like, so the only homework that we have is that Teresa and I will figure out whatever our statement will be for the cannabis retailer piece of it.
Yeah, and I'll email Bennett about the playhouse and talk to Dave Aldergetty to make sure he's prepared to speak on...
Wait, you're about to hand ones, okay.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think we're pretty good, then?
Yep.
All right. All right, and we will go through the budget.
So, did everybody get their town report? Oh, good, sorry, wasn't sure.
Apparently, the school one is...
Everybody was having a mail, a slow mail, not everybody's getting mail every day, so I just wanted to make sure.
I don't get my mail every day anymore.
No, and that's why we were concerned about town report, because some people are only getting their mail once a week, so we were, wanted to make sure.
Did anybody get their school one in the mail? I heard that maybe that got mailed out today, or maybe late last week?
I got my school one.
So, that one should be coming, because I saw an advertisement for it today, that has been put out there.
The town report?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
I haven't seen much of it.
Did you get the gold-colored mailer about the water project?
I got that one quicker.
Yeah, we were, that's great.
I got this, but I didn't get the school one.
Okay, well, at least we, you just were concerned about, I know Dave had mentioned if he didn't get mail soon as he didn't get it for every couple of weeks, so we just wanted to make sure everybody got it.
Yeah, mine comes about twice a week or so now, but I've heard it's gonna be more regular.
I get mail every day now.
All right, congratulations to you.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, well, great, I just wanted to make sure everybody got it.
So, budget-wise, I'll go through the higher levels, what's kind of moving the budget in one way or another, if, at any point when we're kind of strolling through this, if you have a question, just put your hand up and I'll try to get you as I see you, and... So, the first part of the revenue end of things, revenue, year over year, so that's the local revenue that we raise in town, not tax revenue, that revenue has gone up about $56,000 over last year, of which, pretty much all that, $54,560 of it, is through the sale of the transfer station, so, the town of Bethel had sold its interest in the transfer station in July, so Royalton has full interest in that now, and we had worked out a deal with them over a period of time, which is five years, that they will buy our interest out on that, so, so we, right now, for the five years starting this coming budget season...
Yeah, last year, we already got $54,000.
We'll have $54,560 for five years, so that buys our interest out, so that's good on the revenue side, that's pretty much the only thing that really, the revenue doesn't usually move very much in the town, so that is that, when we get to the cost end of things, you know, there's a lot of movers on the cost end of things, and, so the cost, you know, a typical year, you'll see maybe the cost of our budget, cost-cost, of our budget may be changed by, you know, $100,000 at the most, usually it's less than that, and this year, the cost of our budget has moved 263,000, so, so it's a significant move cost-wise, and we'll get through this on how that actually impacted us on the tax rate, and, and why, why things impacted us or didn't impact us as much as we thought, so, if we start breaking down that, you know, the question would be, oh, we went up 263,000, what, what is that, right? So, the high levels of that, and if you want to write it down, or if you have questions, just put your hand up, but, so, the movers of that, $35,000 of that is just on benefit increases, so that's, that's the benefits that we pay our employees, so, $35,000, which benefits went up about 21%, so 21% on our workforce has gone up, then you add in some things for retirement and a couple of other benefits, so, so $35,000 is benefit package? Yes, Dave?
That 21%, I think it should be clear that the big hunk of that 21% was the retirement that we were forced to increase, we didn't give them a 21% raise.
No, 21, our, and health insurance premium went up 21 and a half percent.
Health, but it wasn't like we gave them money.
No, 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 no.
Because that's what someone's gonna think.
Oh, I see what you're saying, that's a good point, no, it was, health insurance premium went up 21 and a half percent, we budget for a small increase, we got a big hit two years ago, was it?
On retirement?
Two budgets ago on retirement, even though the state has the same fiscal year we do, they came out with it late, after we'd all...
And we're sustaining that.
We're sustaining that, but we, I did, we created a little buffer there and hoped if we got an increase, it won't be big, and that, no, salaries, you know, so you're right, it does sound like, that's a good point.
I'm just thinking, that might be a question that needs to be...
Yep.
Yeah, so these are just, you know, uncontrolled costs that are, are, are sent from the state to the carrier, to, to, in our case, the customer.
Yeah.
$80,000 of our budget, which is, is the largest part of our budget that has increased, is due to what we're calling inflation pieces, so, just like you saw, if you filled up your car, or went to the grocery store, a lot of the things that we use in the town have gotten more expensive, some of those biggest movers are, like, salt, for instance, so, a few years ago, we were using almost $100,000 a year in salt, and most of that was just, we were throwing salt on all of our problems, and, and we were able to dial back the salt usage to about $60,000, well, that same $60,000 of salt last year is now worth $100,000 worth of salt now, you know, a lot of that is in just the commodity of salt, it's the transportation of the salt, you know, so everything's gotten more expensive on, on that, other pieces that are in that 80,000 are things like diesel fuel for the trucks for plowing or, or maintenance, heating, heating oil prices for the buildings, so those are a lot of the, you know, then you get into some of the supplies that go up and, and those types of things, so, so $80,000 of the budget really are things that, unless we change the services that we give the town, it's the cost that just went up due to everything that's been going on over the past year, so, we chose as a, as a board to not reduce any services to the community, but to pay the increased inflated cost of those services to have them. $60,000, the next is, we have had, Teresa's has done a really good job of, of landing us some grant money, so we have a lot of projects in town that need to get done, so not just the water job, but we have other projects that we have been successful of getting money from the state, and, and those projects come with matching money, so usually they'll say, "We'll fund 80% of your project, but you gotta come up with the other 20%." So, it's, they're really good deals for us, because that's, you know, 80% money that's coming from, well, it does come from our pocket in a roundabout way, but, you know, it's not local money that comes from it, so, we were able to secure a grant for, for redoing the .8 miles of Christian Hill Road, so paved part of Christian Hill Road, that, if you've driven down that, it's, you know, pretty bad, so we were able to secure that, that it's actually out for bid now.
Yep.
We were able to secure a loan, well, a grant through Bernie Sanders for some of the work on Sand Hill, so Sand Hill is a two-part job, so, the first part of it is in the water bill, which is replacing some of the water infrastructure, and then the second part of it is, you know, if anybody's driven up Sand Hill Road lately, is, you know, the blacktop, the drainage, all those pieces need to be improved, so, so we were able to get money from Bernie Sanders that comes, again, with a match, so, so he gave us $600,000, and we get to match it with 100...
150.
100 and something, so, granted, we're not matching it all in one budget cycle, it's things that either we already have saved for, or things that we continue to save in our, our cycle, we also was able to get a grant to replace the sidewalks that go from the school up to, up to the triangle on Pleasant Street, so if anybody's walked down those sidewalks a long time, they, they're very narrow, the, you know, the curb might only be about that tall now, so there's a lot of issues, the water sits on the sidewalks, there's a bunch of issues through there, so that was another one that we were able to secure, some funding for that, that comes, again, with some grant money.
And that's a longer grant, that's, can take three to five years, because the money comes with, bike ped grant comes with, you have to do a study, so we have an engineer, and, so we're just, I'm actually just reviewing that RFP now, and, so, that will get put out to bid, and with a couple of, with a couple of pre-approved people for, from returns list, but it's gonna be a study first, so you're not gonna see sidewalk construction this year.
Probably for like, two years.
That'd be my guess.
Yeah, but again, what we do is, when we're putting all these projects into usually a 10-year grid, is we, we look and see, how much funding do we need at certain periods to, to keep that flowing, so, so that comes with it, we also have a, a Peavine Boulevard culvert replacement that, that needs to be done, that we have secured the funding for that, again, that's probably gonna be one that...
That'll be in the spring of 2024, because we couldn't, it's a small, it's gonna be, it's a small bridge, it's on Peavine, like, when you come down Sand Hill, if you're gonna bank left and come back, it always floods and freezes, but because we're gonna do the Sand Hill project this year, you know, when the bond passes, so, we can't have both roads closed at the same time, so we'll do that one in 2024, also, a page in town report, I think, lists all the grants, and we did put that in there as well.
Page twelve.
Page twelve lists all the grants, so there's other ones we're doing too as well, Wright Road, McIntosh, so, unless you live in Lilly'sville, we're probably gonna be, or East Bethel will be tearing up your road at some point, or somebody's road near you, so I apologize in advance for the inconvenience, so...
So, those are, you know, those are, you know, some of the jobs that we're looking at doing, and those, where the match money's at for this year, we have about $30,000 of, of the cost is some things that we've changed at the highway department, so, two things we've changed at the highway, well, the, the major complaint and/or what we've seen is our gravel roads, so we typically don't have a lot of gravel on our gravel roads, we've graded them so much that we're down to nothing, all the good infrastructure has been graded to the side of the road at some point, so, we've looked at, you know, how, how many years does it take to, you know, sustain your roads, and on a gravel road, it's about seven or eight years, every seven or eight years, we should be doing something to those roads, and, and I'm sure right now, a lot of you are sitting there going, "Well, I haven't seen anything in seven or eight years," right? So, that's, that's where we're, that's where we're heading, so, so we increased some money in the budget to, to start appropriating the right amount of money to do our gravel roads in the right cycle, the second piece of that is, it connects to the gravel roads, but it is more so winter maintenance, so, winter, a lot of times, as you see, it will spread sand on dirt roads, and as you've all seen on the, in the wintertime, that that sand just turns to muck, right? And it creates no structural stability for the road, so, that sand just turns to muck, or it's at the, at the side of the road, and it's, it's just winter maintenance only. We are trying manufactured sand, so, natural sand is usually round, round stones, has a lot of, a lot of fines in it, so that's why you just see it turn to muck after the...
Slimy, gets slimy.
Yeah, well, it depends on where you get it, but yeah, the, so we've been using some manufactured sand this year, so sometimes you might not, it may look like we're not putting a lot on the roads, but what it is, it's actually stone chips, so you don't see it as much, but it, what it does, it kind of locks into the frozen sub base and stays longer, as well as when it's done, it, it helps with this structure integrity of the road, so you're, in a sense, adding some gravel to your roads in the wintertime, rather than just putting a product down that's only good for the winter, now, it costs more money, so we're, we're, we're monitoring that to say, i- is the extra cost worth the trade-off of, you know, of that, so we're, we're looking at it, but it does cost some money, so that, that's some things that we, we feel confident that will be worth our money as a town.
And I think we're seeing, gonna see, you know, when the road, when it gets a little warm, and, you know, the organic, the sand that had a lot of organics would get really kind of slimy first, so I think, without that, and we have had quite a few phone calls about people saying there's no sand on the road, but we're like, it's just not, the organic sand was much darker, and you could drive down the road and see that they had sanded, and so, it's, this manufactured sand is lighter in color, so you don't see it as much, so, yeah, we're hoping that, that it's a positive change, so that we're not scraping it all out of the ditches, and that it's actually working on the road base.
So, those are just some changes that we have, have done, the, we added some money to the constable budget, so, the, the discussion at the Select Board here over several months has been a combination of what we currently budget and what we currently are getting for service, so, you know, the, the service that we have, or the service that the citizens had asked for, that we are supposed to be guaranteeing, is, is 20 hours of service a week, the challenges that we have with that is, we've always been a town that we've been able to either share constable resources with other towns, or, what we've been doing the last three, four years now, is, we have a part-time constable that comes from another identity to do some work, over the last couple of years, it's, all these identities are short-staffed, so what they do is they offer their existing staff, you know, overtime, and, and typically, they get paid a lot more to do that work than they do working as a constable, so, what we had done at the Select Board was, we have been evaluating, not changing our policing policy, but just changing our, you know, try to get that 20 hours that we've promised everybody, so we've done anything from, we've met with the Windsor County sheriffs to see if we did a contracted patrol with them, what that would look like in our budget, which was roughly about $125,000 if we wanted to do that, and, and our budget is normally somewhere around $50,000 for the constables, so it would be a significant increase to do that, so we had decided at this point that we didn't feel that that was financially stable for our town, so, at, at the end of a bunch of options, what we decided to do was, take another look at what we currently are paying our constables, and try to make that more competitive so that they would want to pick up those hours, so that's the extra $10,000 in our budget is, to set a, a price that is competitive, so that they will come and, and provide the services that we're asking for, and the second piece of that is Teresa's already reached out to them to get them to make that commitment to sign up for those hours, which, that's, you know, we're working through that right now, so...
Yeah, because one of the things, too, was, at least Justin, our second constable, some of the, because there was such a shortage of police officers, we had, at least one constable was on mandatory overtime, and he didn't have hours to give, you know, during COVID, and then another, there were short staffs.
Short staff, yeah.
So, we, you know, when you take someone who works for someone else, which is a great benefit to us, because their boss is making sure they get all the right training, so that they're up to date and all that, we end up, you know, their commitment, obviously, is to their first agency that's giving them all the Bennys and the regular hours, so...
So, there's a good trade-off of the extra 10,000 is not only just to, to get us competitive with the other identities, it also brings our total budget closer to if we wanted to do some contracted services with, say, the sheriff's department, not maybe a full-time thing, but maybe if we wanted to do some selective things, that we would have that option. option without going to like one way or the other. So, it kind of puts our town in the middle. And I think it's something that we still have to.
See how this year.
Look at, evaluate, see how that goes and then, you know, decide, you know, next year, you know, at this, you know, next year's budget, how well that's going or not going.
In October, we'll be having the same conversation and being able to see what the constables were doing, were they able to come to their commitment and see what happens.
And as, as, as we were talking about prior to the meeting, starting was, you know, the, you know, our friends to the north in Randolph are, are, you know, going to be voting to put their police department back into commission. And, and what that brings with it is over 100% increase in their budget. And somewhere in there, they were paying like 400 and something thousand dollars, it's now going to be 700 and something thousand. So, there's, they're, you know, so, big, big numbers that we're talking. And, and we're not on that scale, but, you know, if we would have taken to go to the sheriff's department, we would be talking going from 50 to 125, which is a big jump for our town. So, we're, we're going to, we're going to try this and see how this works and, and make some adjustments to that. The White River Valley ambulance, so, over the last, I don't know, 10, five to 10 years.
We haven't had big.
The adjustments to that budget have been actually very light. We haven't seen very big dips. I think, what, maybe six or eight years ago, does that sound right, Rick? We had, I think they tried one point to increase the budget drastically one year and then there was a lot of discussion around that. And I think it ended up coming down a little bit. But, there was a significant increase to the budget this year. So, on our end of things, you know, we typically spend around $120,000 a year for that service that's now going to go up by $26,000. So, it's, it's a, you know, 20% jump. And, and a lot of that is directly related to wages, benefits.
Same as ours.
Yeah, pieces of it. So, it, it becomes that thing, there's a shortage of doctors, nurses, EMTs, and so, making things more competitive so that they have good trained staff. But, then you had all the benefits and things like that that were increased. So, from what we were told and what you can see on, do you have, what page the, what your Valley ambulance is, you can see if you're looking through there where a lot of their figures have changed is in around their salaries and benefit pieces of it.
Yeah, with their pages.
Toward the back of it there.
And also too, Bethel is, you know, Randolph is the first biggest user and then Bethel's right behind them. So, they obviously.
Six, yeah. So, there, there'll be several pages back there for what your Valley ambulance. So, you, if you're looking through there, you'll see that a lot of it lines up with the wages and benefit pieces of it. And then, the last $22,000 is what, what I would say is normal things that we look at. So, the last $22,000 is what, what is kind of a typical year we're looking at. And that is things like, you know, wage increases for our employees, supplies, you know, those, those types of things that change a little bit here and a little bit there. Some appropriation money changed, like we talked about, some extra money that we appropriated for the library, getting, getting some appointee, appointment salaries, some things like that change that are the $22,000, so. The important piece of it, if we turn to page. I'll get it here in a second. Where's your rate calculation page?
Oh.
You must not have seen it.
For the, okay, it is page, I don't know the index. Probably around 54.
Yep, okay. If you turn to page 54, so, that's kind of where the, you know, when we start talking about revenues going up and costs going down, or costs going up in this case, is what does that really mean for, for my home? You know, how much comes out of my pocket? So, we had established a few years ago, a few years ago, we had established at the board level that, that we hadn't been planning enough for the future to, to get said services. We believed that a budget should be a, a certain amount. And, and also talked about what a fair increase in budget a year would look like for citizens. So, so, we typically kind of talk on a, a 3%, which is close to like two to three cents on a tax rate increase a year is, is kind of flows well with services and costs piece of it. Last year, we had proposed, last year, we had proposed roughly around a 2% increase that ended up being nothing because the grand list went up. So, the grand list, so, the grand list is kind of the Bible of, of the town when it comes to your real estate and, and looking at your budget. Typically, the grand list really don't move a lot. You know, the grand list is roughly $2 million. It, you know, it might move down by just, you know, a couple thousand dollars or up a couple thousand dollars. But, the way the market has been with real estate is a lot of grand lists have changed in one way or another here in the last couple of years. So, right after Irene, our grand list changed a little bit to go downward because we lost some residents or buyouts due to FEMA and things like that. And then, last year, our grand list grew faster than anyone would have anticipated. So, where we thought we were going to be increasing a 2% increase, which actually came out to be two cents, gets confusing sometimes, two and two, but it, it didn't go anywhere. So, it was a, it was a neutral year for, for us at the town. This year, kind of just breaking down the budget, so, the base budget, if you go to the warning, which is Article 10. So, if you look at Article 10, what Article 10 means for you, and it gets a little confusing because Article 10 includes Article.
No, it only includes Article 10 because 11, 12, and 13 all get added on later, just like on the.
Right. But, if, but if you put into play what the normal services are, so, Article 10 plus your White River Valley ambulance and your human services.
Yeah.
What we're looking at is about a 2.3 cent, sorry, 2.8 cent increase in your taxes, 2.3, sorry, 2.3 cent increase in our taxes. Then, there's, then there's the three add-ons in, in the warning, which is, which is the, the extended amount for the library, the extra amount for the skateboard park, and then the $1,000 for the, the Playhouse Theater. If, if all three of those are approved, then that increases it by another 2.8 cents. So, if, if everything gets approved, then cents-wise on the tax rate would be just over five cents, which would be that. So, and, and roughly right now, our grand list, the way our grand list is, or where we anticipate our grand list to be, that every $21,000, so, if you see $21,000 of costs go up or down, that's one penny on, on the tax rate. So, when, when you're thinking at home, the, the, the median home in Bethel is roughly.
Well, we did here, 250,000.
So, if we set a quarter million dollar house, you know, each cent is roughly about $150 a year. So, if you think of one penny on the tax rate is $150 that you pay a year to the town more. So, right now, if everything gets voted in, you're looking at just over five cents. So, that's, you know, you'll be at 600, 600, $700 more that you would pay in for taxes a year if you look at the.
If you had a $250,000.
$250,000.
And that does not count if you have a rebate, obviously. This is just straight-up taxes.
If, if you look at the base, if you look at just the base town budget that doesn't include the add-ons, then you'd be going up roughly two cents, a little over two cents, which is about $300 a year. So, that's kind of how that plays out. Yes, Ellie?
Is that before, because you're, or reappraisal?
We are, so, it is before the reappraisal.
Yeah, it's, this is, this takes an effect and doesn't, and, and so, that's before the reappraisal.
Right, because the reappraisal is going to be a, is a two-year process.
And we will, and our town will be starting a reappraisal in July. So, typically, well, usually, it's, it's often good to do a reappraisal every 10 to 12 years. Or, there can be some factors that will trigger an appraisal, reappraisal earlier. So, the reappraisal really is just establishing a new, a new baseline for everybody. And then, once that baseline starts being adjusted by the economy and, and the way things are being purchased or not purchased, that can go up or that can go down. And it probably saw something that in the legislation right now, they're actually talking about reappraisals because, because everybody's appraisals townwide have changed so dramatically over the last year and a half that it is getting at those rates where those automatic reappraisal lights need to go off and you need to do something. Now, the town, our town had, had already, well, we hadn't anticipated what's going on now, but we had looked at what was going on in our town and said, we're due for a reappraisal. So, the last two town meeting days, we've talked about that. We started a reappraisal fund locally to match the state funds. So, so, we've already contracted that out and we're already starting that process. So, what that reappraisal is, a lot of people, a lot of times scares people and they say, oh, that means I'm paying more taxes and, but what the reappraisal means for a large majority of people is it means we start a new baseline. You'll have some people on each side of that spectrum, very small amount, that maybe either just barely built a house, that might be getting appraised at a very higher level now, that theirs might come down a little bit. And then, you might have somebody that might have done work to their house before the last appraisal. Let's say they, you know, did a lot of inside, you know, changes to their house that maybe brought their value up, that now would get, you know, that theirs might go up a little bit. So, you're going to have people that go, a little bit of people that'll come down, little people that come up, but most of us are going to be flat-lined, just starting a new, a new baseline for us.
Because zoning permits drive the grand list to an extent now. So, obviously, if somebody builds an addition, a garage, et cetera, they have to get a zoning permit. But, if you've remodeled your entire inside of your house and you have a brand-new kitchen and master bath and this and that, that is not, we don't know about that, so it hasn't affected the value. So, that's something that a reappraisal will do. It will, you know, kind of make it, catch everybody up. So, if you have, maybe your house needs more depreciation because it's, you know, been, it's 20 years older and no work has been done to it. So, maybe that house needs a little more depreciation than it currently has. So, it kind of levels the playing field and also creates a new, you know, land schedule and things like that. So, you know, it's, it's a positive thing for Bethel.
What, what about environmental, well, not environmental, but like heating things that supposedly you get rebates for efficiency and things like that, normal, I guess home improvements or home, does that affect, does that?
I don't think that'll affect anything, no, not as far I think.
Windows or, that's just general.
Level of maintenance.
Yeah.
Yeah, just general maintenance, right?
Yeah, I think Rick can answer that better. If someone has a brand-new furnace, is it, no.
No.
Yeah.
First is no. I mean, if you've upgraded windows, it might affect it a little bit, quality is better than it was before, you know, the value. Everybody's value is going to come up.
Yeah.
Just because of the market.
Absolutely.
But, but that doesn't necessarily mean that you're paying more tax.
No, because then you factor in that grand list to the, to the budget and the, and it comes down actually because there's more, more.
The only way.
Tax rate comes down because you're basically spreading your budget over more dollars.
Because the grand list goes up.
The only, the only way that you could pay more taxes would be, like we were just talking about last year and this year as well, that our grand list has increased. The only way that you could pay more taxes would be, our grand list comes, it will significantly, like Rick was saying, it will come up significantly. So, make it up. If your house is worth $200,000, maybe it's worth 250 or 3, right? That doesn't mean that you're going to pay more money unless the town decides to take advantage of that budget and increase, let's say, let's say you had more, you have a higher grand list and you say, we want more services, right? So, you could theoretically pay more if that happened.
I don't see that happening with a Hertong user.
No, but I'm, I'm just being, you know, just so that you know that.
Yeah.
It could happen. It, it doesn't usually happen. It's, it's usually just a base, baseline to do it, but it could, you know? So, as long as we don't all say, well, now that all these houses are worth all kinds of money, we would really like, you know, something else and a, you know, but if we, if we continue the services that we have, you'll see that my property value went up quite a bit, but my tax, my tax rate came down and it should offset. And, and there'll be some people that might pay a little more and a little less, but majority of us should be.
And there's an entire process too. I don't want anyone to think that it's inequitable or, so, if you go through the process and, and you're unhappy, you, everybody's going to get a reappraisal notice. There's time, you can come and talk to the listers. There's a whole process to grieve so that you can, and in this case, you'll be sitting down with the listers and, and a representative from the company doing the reappraisal. And I can speak, I had our house, we went through a reappraisal in our town, I live in Brookfield, and we had built a new house recently within the last five years. And I did go and talk to them, but they had done such a good job. I didn't, I, I thought the value was fair based on the market, I knew what I could get for it and, but just went and asked some questions and, and it was fine. They're very helpful, very user-friendly and, but there is a process. So, if you're not happy and the listers don't, you know, whatever, you have a place to grieve. And, and so, there is a process for everybody to be heard.
And currently, because I sit on the school board as well, so, at the town, like right now with the common level of appraisal percentages, so they go a percent of baseline, where we actually are getting hurt in Bethel right now is on the school end of things. Because the school's calculations for formula is way different than the town. I mean, the town is a very basic calculation which says, here's, here's your baseline, here, here's your local revenue, which is dog licenses and things like that. And then, and then here, and here is your tax rate, right? It's very simple. The, the school has a lot of things that factor into their budget. So, the first thing is the state will establish an equalized pupil rate, which will say, we're going to give you $15,000 for every child that is in that school for the full year. So.
Yeah, if, talking middle.
If they stay all year, yeah.
So, so, they will send you an amount. And then, there's another piece of it that deals with, with the state yield rates. So, so, like right now, where real estate's really good because everything's based on real estate at the educational level, then the yield is higher. And then, they look at the common level of appraisal. So, right now, where our common level of appraisal is at a whack, we are at 88%. I think they sent the card out this year. So, so, baseline's 100%, so, we're at 88, which is below. And when we talked about those trigger points where assessment comes into things, it's 85%.
Forces you to have a reappraisal.
So, right now, for instance, but when you see the school one, the state gave us about $1,000 more a child this year to factor into our, our budget. And the bond yield rates were, I don't know what the percent was, but the bond yield rates were quite a bit higher. So, the school actually was looking really good, like, you know, the budget is, you know, the budgets are much higher. So, the budget's going up by, you know, $400,000. But, with everything being, the bond yield rate being higher and equalized people being higher, it would have been something like a, you know, eight or 10-cent reduction in the tax rate. But, where the common level of appraisal is, is so far at a whack right now, we're on the, on the negative side of that, is now it brought that from, in Bethel, from being an eight or 10-cent give-back to being a, I think it's going to cost us about a half a cent. So, that's the difference in what those common level appraisals can do. Now, if our common level appraisal was at 100, you would get that back. And you don't see that at the town level as much because the formula's way more complicated at the school, but.
Sounds like that.
But, that's just kind of, you know, if, to understand what that.
The value of.
The value of having your grand list be very accurate with the market. And, I mean, how many times in your day have you seen the market change in such a dramatic fact? And, I mean, how many times in your day have you seen the market change in such a dramatic fashion that it triggered the grand list like this? Probably two or three times maybe?
Yeah, I don't think anyone's done it in two and a half years.
Yeah.
Short amount of time. The last time was in, oh, 2005, 2006, but not like a jump this year. And people, people are going to be shocked when they get their reappraisal. They're going to say, oh, my God. But they have to be educated that that's not at this tax rate.
Right, exactly.
Well, what will happen is we take that information and then we reset everything. So you say, based on that grand list, this is what the pennies would be. Then you go from.
And that, like you said, this was, it's an equalization.
Yeah.
But when you have a property that Bethel's valued at 400 to 450,000 and sells for like 1.4 million, I mean, who could come up with that? I mean, it's, it's, there's a couple that, you know, and we've seen it, people paying two and three times what houses are valued at cash and it's.
Or, or if you would have, you know, say last year when building prices were really high, if you built a new house and put it on the, you know, you built a new house, you know, next to your neighbor, that might have been almost a similar house, but you're paying that much more because of the house value of that new house and what it costs and. So that's kind of, that's the high-level look at the budget. So hopefully, if you were following, you know, that cost increase of 263,000, you know, all those pieces in there is, is how we got to that. And the, the breakdown for Town Meeting Day is essentially, if, if we were looking at just, if, if you're looking at Article 10, 13, and 14, which is usually the articles that are on every single year. That's the human services piece, the baseline budget, and the White River Valley ambulance, then that is a 2.3 cent increase over last year. And if you look at adding in Article 11 for the library, Article 12, and Article 15, then that would add an additional 2.8 cents if those all three get in there. And then if you wanted to do the math individually, approximately twenty, every $21,000 you add or subtract to the budget is one penny. So that's kind of how that.
So just a quick question.
Yep.
Teresa and I exchanged emails towards the end of December.
Yep.
And to talk about the increase that just the library would create. And I think we talked about $12.70 per 100,000 dollars of house value. So say for, you know, a $200,000 house, it would be just over $25 a year, is that right?
Because we figured, let's see, you are. So 0.013 is the estimated tax rate. Do you have your 0.013?
Uh, hold on.
You want the grand list, honey?
So just, if you put that in, that's about just a library extra $27,500 one?
It's right here, it's 0.01.
Right, because the other piece is already included in the baseline town budget.
Yeah, it's 1.3 pennies.
Yeah, so 0.013 on the tax rate, you divide by.
Which dollar amount would be?
On a $250,000 house, you take 250,000 times 0.013, 0.013. Did you divide by 100?
So that's $32.50.
On a $250,000 house.
Yep.
Okay.
Does that sound like what I said? If not, just send me an email.
That's roughly, I mean, yeah.
Okay.
Because we talked about, you know, pieces of, you know, like a $100,000 chunk as opposed to 250.
Okay.
So that's about, yeah. Thank you.
Yep.
Not going to be any $100,000 homes left.
Yeah. True.
Well, it's like that, it always reminds me of, there was a, there was a skit that was done, I don't know, a little bit before my time, but it was Dan Aykroyd and Chevy Chase. It was on Saturday Night Live back in the.
Seventies.
Late seventies, early eighties, when they did the inflation skit, remember that? Where they're, they're saying, wouldn't you, wouldn't, you know, because inflation was out of control at that point.
Yeah.
And they were kind of mocking it like, you know, wouldn't you like to be a millionaire? And wouldn't you like to own a, you know, a $15,000 cigar and a $20,000 suit? You know, it was just kind of mocking how, you know, how that was getting out of control. And it kind of reminded me of, you know, just the way things have exploded here in the last, you know, couple of years.
It was White President Carter was president.
Yeah, 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 so. So that's where we're at. Any questions in regards to either, any pieces there?
Just one stupid question. I don't see the sand, the salt, is that included in the?
Next page.
It's hidden right at the bottom of one page.
It's at the bottom of page, right there.
Look at page.
38 has all the gravel, sand, and all that good stuff, but I can't see a salt.
In the budget?
Yeah.
Okay, it should be.
They got kind of cut off, I think.
Oh, no, I tried not to do that.
Page 36, salt.
Okay, yep.
And then the next page that you see, it doesn't count. Then you've got to flip over to page 38 to be, actually be the next page in that part of the budget. And then the top line is gravel.
I don't know how that.
Then sand.
Somehow, somehow.
I see what happened, page one of two was actually.
Got stuck with that one.
Yeah, page two got put behind page one, oh, please, all right.
So salt's on page one of eight.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, so where it says page one of two on page 35, page 37 is two of two. Yeah, it's two, page two of two of the revenues, dang. All right.
You just rubbing salt in the wound, is that what you're doing?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, that was just a good example of what happened with everything, the salt one.
No, all right, well, that's a good point. We'll have to point that out if that's on, next up, thank you. All right, so did the, oh, you can see it, look at that.
So is this where we ask questions?
You, yeah, fire away, if it has budget-related, let's do it.
Okay. All right, on page 12, you were mentioning the grants. And on page 12, there's a grant that says State of Vermont Recreation Facility Grant Program for bike racks, seating, and exit ladders for pool. The grant is 1,487 and it has to be matched. Where is that matching money coming?
Coming out of our budget.
It's coming out of the budget budget.
Budget budget.
Okay, all right, very good. So, and then if you turn to page 40, and, and then right at the top, it's, it's the Recreation Improvement Fund, actual as of 11/1/2022. You get 2,500, does, do you put in every quarter?
Yep.
Is that what you do?
Yep.
Okay.
Bye, Lisa, thank you.
Bye, have a good night, everybody.
Good night, Lisa.
Yep.
Okay, and then on page 48. Okay, on page 48, it says that I know you had put in 100,000 for pool stuff, but that was only just, you were.
Yeah, we threw 250 in there because we just don't know. And it sounded like, well, obviously COVID and inflation and all that, we had heard back originally from the gunite person, I mean, their estimate was way out of whack, but it also made us realize that 100,000 isn't, wasn't going to touch it, so.
So you changed that from 100,000 to 250,000?
Just, it's just a placeholder, that's why it says estimate, we just don't know yet.
You don't know yet?
No.
So, and then, so it's not, that's not going to all come out of the improvement fund? You're going to get grants and fundraising to do that too?
Well, I'm not sure about the fundraising aspect, but we may get, obviously if there's a grant, we'll look for it. But until we have a better estimate, we just wanted people to know, we have to keep our eye on the fact that something's going to happen, something has to give here to the pool. So, yes, we certainly would look for grants and we'll see, you know, once we have a better price tag, we'll have a better idea. Is it going to be a capital campaign? Is it going to be grant, is it a loan? We just don't know yet because we don't know what we're.
I just figured it must have been a change of.
Yeah, well, once we saw the prices, I mean, the guy had a, it was a crazy price, but also made us realize that whole, okay.
So you have interest earned.
I just see that.
And, and there's none on the other years, but all of a sudden you have interest.
I know, I just saw that, Ellie, and I'm not, you know what it is, is it's the balance. Interest, how that, because I looked at this and it was right, that's the beginning balance. That's, I think, is, or the 284 plus the 10 is the 294. And it said zero before that, so I'm going to have to look. I don't have my spreadsheet in front of me because we can't go from a negative 142,405. You know, so that's, there's something in there that's messed up. Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, me too.
There's no interest in the.
Yeah.
Of 2022 or 2023, don't you get any interest then?
We would have, yeah. So let me look at page, I'll just have to make a note, page 48.
We do what it's very small.
Right, but I just, right, it jumped, jumped.
It did, and it's funny too, because I look at that and then I compare it with our.
It just seems really out of whack.
It is out of whack because if you compare it, I do it, and then I compare it with.
I just want to know where you put your money to get that kind of interest.
I know, and then I compare it to page.
Let's just put it this way, the bank error is not in your favor, Ellie.
That's right. And then I compare.
That number's going down.
Yeah, because it has to compare to page 51.
So cash out now if you get a chance.
And page 51 ties out to the 87, 595, so I'm not sure, I'll have to look at that.
Okay, so then, so, and then on, yeah, on that page, 51, you, you talk about the expenses.
Yep.
The, the benches of 3,000 offsets from the, the grant that we got.
Right, but they're still on revenue and still on expense, so, yeah.
And, but what are the fundraising expenses? I wasn't sure.
I think it was the hot dogs and the, I mean, you have the list, I gave you the.
Right, right.
T-shirts.
T-shirts and hot, and the hot dogs.
Hot dogs and printing.
Okay, because I wasn't sure, I came up with 18, 1,800, but I just didn't know if there was anything else.
I, I can't remember off the top of my head, so, but if you look at this.
But that's what it would have been.
Yeah, if you look at the spreadsheet, you're going to see. So it would have been, the benches would have been 3,000, the hot dogs, the t-shirts, the whatever else you, you know.
All right, I just wanted to.
Yep, absolutely.
And then, and then I have a question of, you're doing the replacement of the Geico Well House.
Yep.
Is that going to have any effect on the recreation center during the summer?
No, Geico's across the street, next door, across the street from the school. So we're talking about the Well House, so it's by Renee Turgeon Leroy Carrier's property, across from the school, so it has nothing to do.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
So it's not going to affect.
No, nothing to do with that.
That's, that's between the, that's in Leroy's house.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, very good, okay, because I didn't know, because I know whatever.
Nope, nothing to do with that.
The trucks were going to be.
It's not to do with the well, it's not to do with the reservoir.
Oh, okay.
I mean, there is a reservoir, it's going to get some work done to it, but it's not going to affect.
Anything that we're doing.
No, because it has stone road up to it and all that, so.
All right, thank you very much.
It should be fine. Yeah, that's right. That's right, that's right, it does.
What did you say, Dave?
Waterway comes off that reservoir and it's down to GW parking lot.
It doesn't go anywhere near the rec area.
Oh, okay, very good, very good.
So you're in the clear. I wasn't even looking, I'm sorry, there hasn't been anybody online, so I don't see.
No, she left, it was Jamie Daniels, but she's gone a while ago.
Any, any other questions budget-related in-house here? Okay, anything at the select board level?
I know, we got to, we're going to do the water bond.
Here and then, we'll move on, we got the water bond, famously phase two of the water line improvements.
Yep, so you can, I put it on the screen, but you also, I gave you guys all hard copies. So, so next week we'll have another informational hearing on Monday night. And so this, so we can see if we go down page two, that this is where we are. This is the bond vote's going to be from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM on Town Meeting Day at the school where you normally vote. Absentee ballots are available. So we're going to be doing two-inch, four-inch, eight-inch water mains on Sand Hill, Bicentennial, Highland, Graham, and Crystal Drive. Means new water services, curb stops. We have to put in a new water main crossing under the railroad, which is near Babes, between Babes and the hardware store. We also are going to be building a new booster pump station on, for Crystal Drive. It's actually going to be on Dick Adams' property. And because currently, if you live on Crystal Drive, if you are running water downstairs, you can't run water upstairs. They have no water pressure and that's one of the reasons that the state has said to us, until we take care of that problem, we cannot add any more users to the system. We're also going to do the replacement of Geico Well House, which is the one we were just talking about that's on Renee and Leroy's land. And we are going to refurbish the Boulevard Water Storage Tank that needs some work. So we're having a company that's going to come in and they'll clean it. They'll also do some work to seal it and to take care of any of the, you know, minor issues, nothing crazy.
Reservoir on the town.
Yep.
That's not the Boulevard.
Well, the Boulevard tank is up by the town office.
Yeah, Boulevard tank is up here.
No, Boulevard, Boulevard Wells over here. That's, that's Geico.
That's Geico. Boulevard's by the, across from the town office.
That's right.
By Peavine, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm confused because I'm, I'm thinking where, where the location of this tank is.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Not where the pump is.
It's called.
Yeah, you're right, exactly, yeah. So we talk about why the improvements are necessary and there's a nice little picture here. This is actually something that we found near the Depot Apartments in the street. And I have GW Tetro and the engineers were like, what is this? Somehow they had, you know, they'd managed to connect like three different buildings using this crazy connector. Obviously, the water mains are old, there's no work had been done in a very long time. And we have, a lot of the water line that we have is the two-inch galvanized. So that's why we're able to qualify for some of the lead subsidy. That's why we did, you know, we got quite a bit of that in the last project and we're getting that again in this project. They'll do a dollar-for-dollar match. So what goes in, they pay for it going in, or coming out and going back in. So that will be taken up. And obviously, the, he's saying the requirements here, the Crystal Drive, which we just talked about, and then the Geico Well House, they just, that's the one that's down by Turgeon's that needs to be dealt with because it is, has deteriorated and it's, you know, taken some flood impacts. It's also kind of funny because it's like this three-tiered thing instead of being all on one level. So when it floods, if it floods, it's, it's going to flood again.
So we just got to think about, you know, there was a prolonged period of time in town where, where we didn't do any upgrades to our water infrastructure. So, you know, there's, from what we're being told by the experts, you know, your water system is on like a forty-year rotation. So you should be doing certain segments of it, you know, every five to eight years, you know, because I think we said there's five or eight seg, eight segments.
Yeah, there's going to be.
So every five to eight years, we should be doing a segment of this. And we haven't done anything in a very long time. So like that picture shows, that, that's some of the issues that we have there. And as we found with water line phase one, you know, we used to spend a lot of time digging up to fix water breaks. You know, that's a lot of, a lot of wasted time, that's a lot of wasted resources because the pumps at the water station are going longer if you got, you know, major leaks. And we've already seen that paying dividends just by, we're not, you know, probably just jinxed us all, but, you know.
Digging a hole tomorrow.
We're not digging the holes in the ground as much. So it's a combination of the old infrastructure that should have been changed out, that needs to be changed out. As well as the state, when they come in and do the periodic. As well as the state, when they come in and do the periodic.
And do your inspection.
Audits on your water licenses, they say you need to, you know, XYZ needs to get done. So these are pieces that the state has determined that we need to do as a town if this bond vote passes or doesn't. So if we don't pass the bond vote, we still have to do these things, it's just going to be at our own dime, 100% our own dime, so.
Yeah, and. Huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly, and, and like the railroad crossings, you know, on one of these pages, on page six, it says, these, these are old, 1900s to 1950s, so that we're dealing with that. Let me just tell you, talk about dealing with the railroad.
And then like we're seeing with like Crystal Drive, for instance, is there were pieces, segments of the system that were constructed that didn't necessarily meet proper specs.
Engineering standards, yeah.
You know, so to get pressure to certain elevations were not done correctly, you know, over years. Or, you know, a lot of times you see a developer maybe years ago put in so many houses, and then the town took over those, that area, but maybe it wasn't developed the way it should have been.
Maybe it wasn't, you pressure tested to see if it would work out.
So, you know, Crystal Drive is an example of that, that town at some point took that over, and, and there's not adequate pressure to run your systems as you go up the line there, so.
And there's a picture on page seven, oh, sorry, Dave, that shows interior deterioration in Boulevard Tank, and it was built in the 1950s, and, you know, those are certainly very expensive to replace.
So is the hammer laminated over or is that just in the tank?
It was just in the tank, I guess, with the pictures that the person took.
So we're going to have to dig up Main Street again to do that railroad, railroad crossing?
Nope, we're going to, only piece that's going to get dug up is right next to Babes, where there's like that wall right there, that's going through, and we're going to try to, we're going to directionally bore that, so we're not coming in, no, so it's just there. No, 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 we're, we're not doing that, so we're not, we're not doing that. So on page eight, it shows, you know, we have an aging and corroded equipment. This is, this is the pump house near Turgeon's, which we've been talking about. It's not built to withstand flooding, and it's got some structural deterioration. So we are going to be tearing this one down and rebuilding a new one, and it's going to be less dangerous to get in and out of, it'll be all on one level. And we've worked with the homeowners, we have assigned easement to, you know, where the placement's going to be, and it will look, you know, match your home and those things. So the big one is, everybody wants to know is what's it going to cost? So we are passing, working hard to pass a bond vote for 2.5 million. You can see they lay out the construction is around 1.8 million, there's a 15% contingency fee, engineering, and other costs, 76. This also includes that there'll be someone overseeing the project, you know, there's be an onsite engineer, which is very helpful to us, someone overseeing the work, making sure that the contractor does it, you know, per specification, and, and so that's what we're looking at here. We talk about funding opportunities. We were lucky last time, we had a 2.8, we had 2.8 million dollars worth of work done for 939,000, because we got so much aid and assistance. I think that, obviously, we were hoping that would happen again, because we've all heard about all the federal money that's pouring into the state and this and that. But because at the same time, what happened is the median household income in Bethel and across the state really raised, which is a great thing, everybody's making more money. But when they, you know, we say that, right, but then you're paying more gas and so, like, no, anyways, so the median household income comes up. So what happens is then the state with their, you know, formulas say that we're, we don't get a disadvantaged subsidy that we qualified for last time. We no longer qualify for that. So what we are looking at this time is we're looking for approximately $425,000 in subsidy from the state. That's what we're estimating right now, and that's just based on solely lead replacement, the galvanized replacement. If it's more than that, great, you know, but that's where we're at right now. And what they're, and what we're also anticipating is a 40-year loan at a 1.5% interest rate. We were lucky with the 2.8 million dollar project, because that 939,000 dollar loan we got for 40 years was 0% interest. So we are openly admitting, we are not looking at as good of a package in aid that we were looking at before. Not that we haven't tried, it's just, this is, you know, the state tells you what they're going to give you, and.
But it's still a better package than if we have to do it ourselves.
It's still $425,000 and a reduced interest rate that we didn't have before. And they will give us a subsidy for our planning loan, so it looks like around $49,000 that they are going to give us. So because we looked at this, I talked to the engineer and the state about, we can't, obviously, there's less users on the system than there is taxpayers. So in the prior package, they wouldn't allow us to put any of the money onto the taxpayers, it had to go onto the users. And it worked out to be a pretty good deal, so it was all right. This time, we talked to them, because we're getting less aid, I want to know how that, if that would impact our financing from the state. So what we did was, we looked at the possibility of having the users pay for the water upgrades, but putting the road construction onto the entire tax base. Because we would have, if we needed paving or gravel roads, we would normally pay for that out of taxes anyways. So to try to give the users, you know, to try to see if we could take some pressure off the users. So that's the way, you know, we looked at, we looked at this, to look at how we could cost share. Obviously, everyone has to vote on it, this is a question I get, why aren't just the users voting? But everybody has to vote on it, because it's the good faith and credit of the entire town that stands behind the bond note. And, um, so currently, we're saying the typical residential water customer pays $126.04 per quarter. And we expect them to see, to see an increase of about $26.14 per quarter. And that's, that's us taking out all the roadwork, hydrants, and related costs for, for the roadwork. And that's going to, that on a $250,000 house is going to cost a taxpayer $18 a year, so as you can spread it over more users.
And then like the.
It's difficult, because they've had, the rates had not been raised in a long time, and then we did have to do a big hike about.
Four years ago.
Four years ago, 10%, because people were paying a $25 vacancy rate. Well, that wasn't even covering the base operating cost, so we have changed the rate. I did hear that someone was upset because there is an increase this year over last year of delinquencies in water. We do not calculate water rates based on the delinquencies, so that is not a factor into this. You are not paying because somebody else hasn't paid. We readily admit, we had, you know, certainly with Tim's death, we had bigger fish to fry as to just cover the, the job and to get moving. And we, a couple of them are bigger users, and I, it's all collectible, and, and we will do that, so, but I don't want people to think that you're paying for that, you're not. We'll, you know, and it is collectible and it will be collected, so don't, I don't want someone to think that, that, that just because someone else has an $11,000 delinquent bill, we'll get the money. And, um, that doesn't affect.
Yeah, but they got eight people in the house versus one who pays exactly the same thing.
Exactly, and that's a conversation Bethel's had for a long time. And that is something that they've talked about, and I know at the 2.8 million dollar, we're looking at that. I think it was, we were looking, I think if we metered the whole system, it'd probably be like a million bucks or more by the time we paid for meters and went in and, you know, did everybody's house. You know, I certainly have said openly that it seemed, you know, we have some people metered, and it looks like, you know, if we were going to start, Bethel was going to start metering, I think they need to start with the high users and kind of get it accurate, and kind of meter down to make sure that the businesses and multiple family apartments are, are, you know, paying what they need to pay, so.
And, and the challenge with our system is, is when you're talking a cost of something, you have the fixed costs and then you have the variable costs. And being that we are such a small, the, the water service is a smaller identity in our town, it's not like a big city. So we have a lot of fixed costs, so regardless of how much water Dave uses at his house or not, set, like 75, let's just round terms, 75 to 80% of the costs are fixed, no matter if we turn the faucet on at home or not. That's the, you know, that's the facility, that's the, the individuals running the facility. And then the variable cost of what, I guess, we could control as, as consumers is very, very small. And when we looked at things like water meters, to add on that much more fixed cost, at the end of the day, did not pay back the water users on the variable cost. If anything, what would have happened is you would have been getting charged more for water, and then turned around and had to use your water less, or wouldn't have the ability to use the water as frequently that you would want unless you wanted to get charged more. So it was kind of, in our situation, a little bit of a, a double, you know, whammy for, for individuals. Where a city where, you know, you have, you know, tens of thousands of users, you, it makes sense, because you have a lot more variable piece of that with, with this. And, and on the first project, and usually Paul has the number, but on the first project that we did, want to say that we had advertised that, that the water users were going to, their rates were going to go up like $14 a quarter, somewhere around there.
12.
12. So we had advertised that in the bond vote, that it was going to go up roughly around $12 a quarter, that actually went up about two or three.
Yeah.
So, again, we got really lucky on a lot of the financial packages that we had gotten, so I guess in some way, we've already kind of saved the users some money from the last time, where this time, those potentials aren't there. Now, we're still hopeful that maybe something will happen, but, but we have to be realistic with everybody to say, this is, you know, prepare for this.
Yeah, because this is what we see.
And if we can do better, we will obviously do better, but.
We did, you know, we did get the $600,000 from Senator Sanders, so that, you know, while the water system is going to pay for just the water part, you know, like, the 600,000, or now 750 because of our share, will pay for, you know, the rebuild of the road, the stormwater and, you know, everything else.
Help you on the tax end of things.
Yeah, absolutely, so construction is planned for this summer, so that's why we're having the bond vote on town meeting day. Obviously, we're hopeful that it passes so that we can move forward, because, you know, part of this too is that the planning commission and, and Rick and Denise and I can all attest that we're working with Two Rivers to create an increase in density, so more, you know, to have some more flexibility, maybe more housing, more. But we, we can do that, the PC, but yet the state says we can't add any users, so it's, we're kind of like fighting ourselves, so.
And then one thing that, um, to look at that was significant in this one is, and again, if we pass it or don't pass it, we still have to do a majority of these upgrades. Now, there might be some that we could push off, but a majority of them have to get done to keep our water license. But one of the biggest drivers on this isn't necessarily the cost of the project, but it's the interest of the project that we're going to pay. And there's a huge difference between 0% interest on $2 million and 1.5% interest on $2 million. And, and what that means is at the end of our life of our loan, we're going to have like $800,000 in interest on this job.
Right, but it's going to save us about $260,000 over the.
No, that's what I'm saying, and we've all seen that with rates going up, so it's one of those things that we're paying more this time around, because we've all seen, you know, the federal government has raised rates, you know, consecutively, I don't know, what, eight quarters now, or whatever it is. And likely is going to continue to do that, and things are only going to get more expensive, so if we did delay this somehow, we're probably going to be footing the bill on higher interest.
And as well as we don't know what incentives are going to be coming, because some of the money is funneled from the feds through the EPA into the state, so that money dries up for like galvanized line or lead replacement, then the state's not going to be offering us much either. So at this point, it's kind of taking advantage of what we have, so.
And a lot of that federal money that, that we hear about is supposed to dry up in 2024.
Yeah, so we'll see what, you know, what else is going to happen. But kind of, this was just an interesting picture on page 13. This is actually something that we found in Main Street. This is an old piece of wooden water line back in the day, and we actually found this on Main Street. It was still in the ground, not being used, but it was still there, so.
Okay, so it was not being used.
No, and then the final page, this is our, yeah, it does make you wonder, our 70-year-old water pump at Geico. So this has not been replaced for 70 years. So that's a picture of that, that's what, um, he put on the back, so. Yep, that's what I got from the engineers, I asked him today, this afternoon about 2 o'clock, I was on the phone with him and asked him, and he said that was. Yeah.
When we first finally got the power to it.
I bet.
Did they refurbish it or something?
They must have, yeah.
They pulled it and did something.
Yeah, they must have refurbished it. This was the picture.
We could not, we, you couldn't stand in that room.
It was so loud.
But it was the only pump that would run.
Yeah.
And give water.
Yeah, it was only allowed.
Until it went.
So hopefully, on town meeting day, you know, bond passes, and we're trying to get the information out, and really appreciate people are coming to hear about it and ask questions, and we're trying to do, we've done stuff online, put this presentation out, also sent it to all the committee chairs, it's on Facebook, it's on Front Porch Forum, it's on our website, to try to, you know, make sure that people are educated about the vote.
So, um, what do you anticipate down the line of future projects?
Actually have a list on the corner of my desk, I found it, something that Tim had drawn up, and so we have a couple, so there'll be a break, obviously, we've done these very close together, yes. And so there's going to be a break. The next, we have, projects left are going to be South Main, you know, from the town office out, and since the state paved recently, that's nothing we're going to be doing tomorrow. Also, the North Main is the other piece, and River Street. So we do have another three pieces, and it was, so, but I think that the space of time might have been, don't hold me to this, I want to say it was five years or so until we did like another piece, certainly.
So Pleasant Street is good?
Well.
Pleasant Street is actually, um.
Up to the fire station.
Yeah.
The fire station on that stretch was brand new, I don't know, 10 years ago, maybe.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if, if, what piece, yeah, I'd have to look at Tim's piece.
Either yours house or.
Mine's the last one, yeah.
Yeah, and we did do some work there in the last project, we put in a couple sampling stations, and, but, you know, knock on wood, we haven't had any, you know, issues with that. I'll have to look at Tim's list, I actually made a copy of it and put it in the select board's packet for our next meeting to, so, and, but I had just found it the other day and shared it with Richard, so it won't be doing, we won't be doing it in another two years like this, so.
So we're doing Graham Street.
Isn't that right off River Street?
It is.
Okay, so we're going, that's just, we have a piece of that, and then later.
You know, later do the Main.
Later do the Main, yep, so it's, um, we have Graham, Bicentennial, Sand Hill, and what we're anticipating is the DWSRF program won't pave for a full lane, full width pave generally, but obviously Graham, we don't think that's a problem, and we, so, there's going to be, there may be a situation on Highland, depending. Up where? Yeah, well, we also, I asked Richard about it the other day, and we think that the water line goes right down the middle of Highland.
Do you think that the water line is broke there?
In my house, I happen to live on Highland Avenue, and the pipes are literally rattled, and it's not enough drawing water, it's not, I can just sit in there and you hear this.
Sounds like, so there's pressure getting in the line, so I'll ask Richard to take a peek, because that's definitely what it sounds like, is that, because if there's pressure, if there's air getting into the line, I would think that would do it.
They get up in the middle of the night and look under the bed because.
All right, so I'll say Highland have noise, I'll ask.
And I would think, you know, assuming that we're still around after all, you know, down the road is, you know, I guess the next piece would be to get whatever the next piece of this puzzle is, that's South Main Street or whatever, and probably get the project shovel-ready, so that when there's an opportunity to take funds from the federal government or state government, that we can say, we got a project ready. Because as we found out.
That's what we did here.
It takes us about a year, maybe even a year and a half to get a project to shovel-ready so that you can take on funds. Because if you wait until the funds are available and then you. Because if you wait until the funds are available and then you try to do it, the funds are dried up by then. So, so I think that's what our goal will be is, we're talking about pausing, but I think we're still gonna go ahead, do some of the engineering to get it ready so that then we can take advantage of it when, when the opportunity presents itself.
Which is what we did here, when we knew that, you know, that president, that presidents were changing, we knew that a lot of times when they do that, there's infrastructure money that comes in depending, you know, when a new president takes over. Obviously, that's what President Biden did. So we, we were already in design for Phase Two. We can get a planning loan and I think they give us five years, basically, no interest until we, and then they give us some forgiveness later when we finance it through construction. But yeah, it's, it's all about the timing and that's how we were able to get, you know, I think we got a good deal last time because the state was putting a lot of pressure on us. And this time, because we were, you know, we were trying, we were ready for the project to come, so we were already on the priority list. So, you know, we always do keep an eye on that and see, you know, what's, trying to see what's coming down the pike for money. But yeah, and when you can do a planning loan at no interest and you got five years to do your project, it just makes sense to kind of start looking ahead. And we did have a master plan done a few years ago. Bethel did have one done a few years ago, so we, and we were just, Richard and I were revisiting that the other day, looking at, you know, what are gonna be the priorities and it could switch. It could be all of a sudden, if we have a bunch of breaks on one side, you know, one thing that Bethel is blessed with is a lot of water pressure. So we fix something and there's something weak down the road and blowing it back out. So you're certainly blessed with good water pressure, so.
You ready to change where the shut offs are?
That could be, I'm actually gonna sit down with engineers on Wednesday to see the plans. Do you know where your shut off is now?
Across the street from where I live on somebody else's lawn.
Yes, then yes, because we had that.
That's why I wondered what it says, curb stops.
Yep, that's, that's what it is. You will get a curb stop that's on your, on your side of the road, yeah. We went through that with here, we, the Depot, we couldn't, they couldn't figure that thing out. It ended up, there was one of them that was like, the pipe had gone out. I think they avoided some ledge and came back and somebody's, one of the shut offs was across the street and it was kind of convoluted, so yes.
Is there a line for, where your pump is?
Oh, are they on Dix? Oh, hopefully he doesn't mess with you and try shutting your water off, just for fun.
My plug's still rattling.
But, yeah, so it could be that there's, it could be air in your line, it could be in your service line or it could be in the water line where it crosses the road.
Those are some common complaints that we've had is a combination of we haven't done anything with our infrastructure in so long. And then, you know, maybe buildings have been constructed since then or whatever, since last. I mean, we're starting to think of, you're looking at that, you know, a lot of this stuff, infrastructure was before 1950. So think of all the houses that were constructed after that. And like I know my house out on Pleasant Street, when they put in the new water line, when we were having non-stop breaks out there, my water shut off was on the opposite side of Route 12. So I would have to, you know, I'm not digging up through Route 12 to get to it, you know? So, I mean, those were some things. And then when they put that in, now I have a curb stop that's on the corner of my property as well. But, and there were so many places that didn't even know where it was.
Yeah.
I remember one time out in Pleasant Street, didn't they have a curb stop for my neighbor? They just had to turn it off at the, you know, at the main.
And we recently had to do that on Sand Hill. We had to shut off several people just because one person was having a problem in their basement because we couldn't find their shut off. But I did wanna say, as I was saying about Highland and the paving, drinking water loans only let us do basically a trench patch. And then Richard said to me the other day, he said, I'm pretty sure Highland's water main goes right through the middle of the road. I was like, yes, because we might, even if we have to put in a little bit of capital road money, you know, if the trench is gonna be so big, we might be able to make a deal to get a full pave because what's gonna be the point of trenching, you know, come on, half your road.
Just do it all at once.
So I was very happy when he, when he said where it was, so that's.
I'm sure they have trouble following.
Oh, I'm having.
It was your first turn on, it's a good, like eight, nine inches, they just dropped.
Yeah, okay, I'll have, I made a note to have Richard, you know, take a peek at that and see what's, what's going on there, so. But hopefully, bond passes and we put out to bid and we start construction and you all have new shut offs and water line and paved rope. So it would be nice, it would be nice for, yeah, everybody deserves that, so.
Okay, you can pave my road next time.
Well, not you. You don't deserve it, I'm sorry, the ladies in town deserve it. Yeah, sorry, no question.
We are, we are paving your road.
We're gonna pave your place to the nine miles of Christian Hill.
Speaking of that, if we get to other business, I have one request.
Yeah, so I was just gonna open it up now to public comment, so if there was.
Any questions?
Anybody wants to comment on anything, it doesn't have to be.
There's two pumpkin-sized holes across from Scammle Lane. If you go up there in a truck like mine, you end up being thrown out the window.
On the, okay, across from Scammle, is that John McClane's?
No, next corner.
Okay.
Next corner.
All right.
It's blue or whatever, Darlene's. And the next plate, next road that goes down in is Scammle.
Yeah, I know where Scammle is, so it's across the street from Scammle.
Right in the middle of the road, big, big holes.
All right, and Christian, not, yeah, so there'll be.
Hopefully they could just throw some patch in there for, at least for, holy crap.
Yeah, I'll make them know, so, all right, we'll tell them.
Well, it's like the Sand Hill, the only, the only part of Sand Hill that's in good shape is the patches we put in. The rest of the, the rest of the road film part is just the patches we put in.
That's right, that's right, across from Scammle Lane, two big potholes, okay. I'll, I'll let them know. Well, they'll be, if we get the storm they're talking about, they'll be filled in with snow and you'll be frozen back.
Yeah, be frozen back.
So we'll let them know. They're talking about Thursday.
Anything else, any other public comment? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
What time is it? 8:34.
Okay. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you so much.